Hey. And the society of the people that have been with the people and from the the revenue for the society is hoping to mark. Today evening, my being there. I don't know. My ladies, both of you. All they have to do is try to go or clean for tea and the city's community action program operated by the community department and community development. I would like to welcome you to this community meeting session hearing for two thousand twenty two. The hearing is being conducted to determine service by R and D for our neighborhood in connection with the federal community service block grant or C S B G program which provide anti poverty program. Everybody, I'm not playing that for talking about them. On the reverse side of the agenda duty scene, when he enters, it's a more detailed explanation of the N A D, the C S B G program and this community needs assessment project. Neighborhood advisory board for N A D. Having authority and responsibility to help set the priorities for fourteen one neighborhood improvement area throughout New York City for the federal C S B G program. The map of our individual area is at the table with the D Y C D stat. So who want to see what area we're responsible for this mapping? That'll be true of that. The larger maps you play here are for our individual area and the entire ball. At this time, I let introduce my colleague, Senor, on the N A D. Introducing the fellow.
Hi, my name is President. I live in Ocean Side Apartments on the neighborhood of last year.
As residents, students, workers, business owners, or service providers in the community, you are uniquely qualified to speak to the issues and needs that affect our community. We appreciate your attendance here today and look forward to your comments. Each person will be given two minutes to share their assessment. Please try to keep your mouth focused on the questions which were listed on the flyer for tonight. What are the most urgent needs in your neighborhood? What kinds of programs? What are threats going to be? If you wish to get testimony to indicate that at the signing table, I have to go to the panel here. Moreau, right? You'll be first. Testimony. We will call him up in the order to register his speech. If you have written text on please leave this with us immediately. We will give you visual to let us know when they're handing them. We want to ensure that everyone has a chance to speak. So we ask that you please keep the reading as well. You're ready for this very important talk? Because we appreciate your time and coming to give us the thought. We're also making a recording over here. So we ask that you keep lively and clear. Again, thank you for coming tonight. We will call people up in the order of their testimony. Good. Let's begin. Mr. Moreau?
Uh, good. Yes, I can say it before.
You can come here. You can use the mic.
Well, I figured that maybe I can just think that that works a little bit better.
That's what I.
Um, all right. Ladies, gentlemen, my name is Mark Moreau. Um, I am an employee of the district community for a senior. Again, in my lab, my place operates, we've got to go forward. Inside of the, uh, each for the first, uh, community center or sixty five, you know, I work with the country, this group and everyone within the community. I'm a broker in the agency and this is my first time hearing that a meeting is something I think is good. And just from my observations, working out before return here, uh, as of March of this year. I love this community. I love the community in this community and I see there's a value for a lot of things. I am a student. I think one of the things that, for my attention is that there is definitely a good technology element out here as far as other businesses and services. I notice here a problem is that I can hear the meeting that, uh, anyone who's and I think that they can use the convergence like markets or restaurants or places of food, uh, on the services that's in that way. So first, it's a need, it's an asset now. Uh, when I'm going down the street, the only new business that I see, when we get up here, there's a smoke shop. And honestly, I'm not sure a lot of people are aware of this, whether they hear it from the sound of my voice. There's smoke shop in the communities. It's in the same proximity, church, Chinese restaurant, uh, liquor store and maybe one or two more than. And if you're quite honest with you, I do believe that having a smoke shop in these neighborhoods could not, I mean, it's a hindrance for, um, sure people's sport, sure people enjoys the job, sure people enjoy the amount of, and it's put in that amount of community first and point sure around here from the rock from one point. But let's keep realistic. How many of these people are buying a smoke shop instead of a smoke shop while they come to the community, you know, asking them and they'll hear the setup shot. No one's asking what can the mother of this community, what opportunity this community has. It'll be those people markets around. I was living in the community, but when I take what's coming to me from work, it's too much. I broke from getting right from the day by food program last year. These people markets are far, you know, you have to go at the five times to go shopping. You have to go to the month, you go shopping. You gotta go around to the one sixteen new point to go shopping, you know what I mean? How is that fair to the seniors or how that clear to another? How's that clear to the fellow in the community? How about second of world, not spiritual around? There's no bunch of shops in the, in the communities where someone knows the question of getting quality food for their advance. We have to go and trade those and spend a lot of money to get decent quality food. There are no press, there's no markets around. You got, you got farms, you got that, you got the new grant, which is great. Guess what? You have only one thing here, you know what you can use? You can purchase the investments that are being brought inside of the community grant and that will generally win the community. People can get options that have a face shot to buy fresh food and vegetables. There are a lot of people out here that are interested and I think that's a true need. What it also does is that it also, they also can be done with different inspire to go to work instead of having a guy who's still on a work day and you absolutely not. I see guys hang out at one point store or four and four, just hang out on the side where they're actually done with stepping in and breaking or the airways. And I mean, that's, that's, but you know what? You can get some of those men out there to work. If that working, you're going and you have to work on side by, potentially walk, you know, a walk, where, where's the real walk shop around? Where's the nearest next line around? You can have those things here rather than having a Uber shop. You know, who can wear that? It's sort of over the same streets, you say, that if I'm verified today.
I'm very prejudiced about that one other day.
Yeah.
But I've always had that feeling of finding a, you know, like, 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 like the sauce and shit, and they have to be shopping on stuff. As far as on this one, you know, it's fine, maybe having spaces, but it's key move. It's that type of, when you walk down the street, then you find a restaurant, you walk down three cases, there's another one, you walk down another place and a half, there's a chicken spot. But guess what? We don't own these things much before, you know what I mean? I mean, there's a town here, you can get a soul food spot, a soul food restaurant, you can get a Spanish restaurant, all of them are part of where everything's been there. But because of what happened with Sandy, and I totally understand, you know, the damage suffered, wiped this area up. And there's so many problems in one of these channels that you can construct and hit new businesses, but something that could be regenerative and not regenerative. That's the thing. When I see a smoke shop, and trust me, I bought the law, I'm too law, I love basketball, you know what I mean? But I don't want to have to, you know, enroll to this a golf spot or weed spot while there's also the kids perhaps maybe walking in here and they can tell the difference between , um, sour patches and the sour patches with the nice smell. You know, the stimulus, people are getting bored and all this, it gets a difference. But it's fine because these guys who are coming into communities like this, they feel that everyone is asleep, everyone is definitely drunk and not aware of what's going on, they take advantage of it. Uh, this is what we do. And I think this is where we as a community start to say, listen, remember what he said, let's cut this value map. I don't, I'll be honest with you, I would rather prefer to go to a nice spot, they do not need banana, a nice salad or whatever and have a game on the ends of it. This system, this system, this is the idea. So when you see, you stand out in the corner, they can buy new spaces, they don't work it up. I'm gonna make that so that you have confidence, things are worth popping, everyone will be deep, will be back and safe, but it will be just sustainable and people will have uses of those, you know, and that will be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody have comments on that? I'll come up with a heading too, just a few.
Oh, I totally, I totally, totally agree with what you said. I really subscribe to that. That I see. That I'm trying to share, that share the things you're saying to the community. So the feeling we have, I feel, moving with this, and, uh, we really believe that, and we, we.
No.
No, I can't say, even if you can, you can't now through this, uh, in the city, okay, that's a good idea. Trying to, uh, be point of practice, to say, that, looking for some, you know, in the, to the, you know, it don't have to be bad here, it's point of practice, and it's still my neighborhood, and it's still my community, or that, uh, for the, for the direction of what we see. I feel totally disagreeing with that, and that is what I'm thinking about before. You should have, and I should have, for a competition, you know, I'm really, certainly should have a sale, absolutely, a vote to say. We're all prepared, the boys, the boys, the boys, the boys. I really see what you're doing, just the last, where they're talking about, after these schools, uh, for seven, uh, they're, uh, not even easy, or what they're saying is to be good. But I do say, and I know they think this, one, we don't want that, okay? Not have certain ones, because, uh, for, the least important, uh, anything on something, okay? Let me start tomorrow. And they put this on with the kids that are teaching the sour patch, and, and stuff. And enjoying that these schools, so I'm working to work, uh, working, this, you know, for same of our first floor, or, but, are you trying to second you think that this, the jail, uh, should be people, that started our school and, uh, maybe?
I mean, the, the availability of food that it was designed for, which is a certain of the different divisions, three years ago, the women's team, the second thing that we agree, the definition, right, just like it was not. Uh, I know, uh, uh, a couple things other than the education on the, you know, there is a Rockaway new chapel on the corner of H fifty eight.
Yes.
Uh, there is a ride for them.
Yes, and we, we got to.
Yes, a farm, and, and, so those are, and the nearest decent food department is on Beach Saturday, you can rock with these four of us with the stop inside that way. Outside of that, we got another, another, to the, what you were saying, man. I'm tired of it, that things work here the way they do elsewhere. Like you want to put the onus on the politicians and I totally agree, you're not even buy a politician, you give them a campaign strategy. If you think that those guys and Uber shop didn't contribute to somebody's campaign, you got their head started, exactly. What do we do about that? They should consult with you. We, we don't have, other than the neighborhood advisory board, we just don't have a centralized power. You know, you represent your area and we got nobody down there and, and, and the other areas. I have a question, I just, I have about, um, the various, uh, the, the, it's the east, no, not the business. You are the president of the Kennedy Association. So we got all these to go and each one of them has their own Kennedy Association president. Do you ever meet together?
In court.
Is that what I hope?
Yes, in court, but, oh, it's far with, uh, come together, like to say, we, um, do a long, we, we, we gotta go, 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 and I feel that we should go together.
So that's the only way you're gonna put the president on the policy?
I feel that we should all work together, you know, each year, but we should, feel that we should pick the day out of the law and we sit down to the table and we're talking about, you know, so, so we feel that we eat, okay, we, 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 or, 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 we don't, um, so ready to, the, you know, we are, you know, without, like, we have, you know. Up to you. There's a, it's not the, it's not the law, and that's why the, 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 the that means we're, and we, but they're for you, they're bringing the table for us, okay? But.
But who bring you there?
But we have, we have, but we do, but we do have a power of both sitting, working together on a morning and then to, but we, we can sit down and get together and do our own, they, uh, thing, that's the thing.
And what question on the politicians that you have?
Before, before many come, time, uh, for the, uh, for the D O S, they all tap in at our doors.
I'm pretty sure.
This is happening in your, going up the phone, going, you know, up that help get folks, yeah, I understand, so neither.
Yeah. Right. I just want to say that I'm a Southwest president of Washington side and all during the summer, I should, um, have a few family days, right? These are distractions, guys. Um, and, uh, we have the, the grandparents and, and the bookbag race thing and, uh, a lot of other, you know, uh, barbecues and activities going on and they're good for the moment, but they're a distraction from the major issues that are going on in this development. And, uh, boards are, uh, their, their meetings are to help them to get the information that they need to run a smooth, you know, uh, successful board and to be able to address the issues that go on within the development in terms of ignorance, in terms of convictions, and issues that people are having problems in there. But I'm a community activist as well, so I'm the type of person who goes out to the streets and makes some noise. And like I said, we as presidents and board members need to, uh, come outside of our developments and address issues that are going on in the community that deals with the people who residents, that the people that they go to the stores, or they don't go to the stores. There are food deserts out here. Um, the thing is that this still abandoned state economic development, non-communicative services, you know, we need to train the people and there are some programs that are out there. We need the people to come out and to get involved. But we need, like you said, there are so many, uh, dilapidated, empty, abandoned buildings that we can turn into, say, community, uh, colleges, uh, different trainings and to portray schools, things like that, that people can go to. Smoke shop should not be in the neighborhood and that should have been voted on and we need to take that to the electoral office. We need to get together as presidents and board members and have an appointment and meet with them and talk about this. And if that doesn't work, I'm not, I don't know what this is right place to say, but we need to protest, rally, boycott, or whatever it is, to not let this happen. Okay? Senior access to supermarkets, butcher shops, stores, healthy foods. We do have, we need that. It's, it's not possible for people to get on a bus all the time and go up and down all around, uh, this peninsula, especially in that hot weather. So, um, that place could have been used as a store for the, for the, uh, the gardens over there. That little place for the smoke shopping, because that was next to the corner and they could be, uh, stopping up that store and have that store where the fresh vegetables are sold. Not only for the restaurants in the area that try to go on the land for food, because they're getting it from that, um, that garden, on Oregon Street, whatever, or Ninth Street, but that would have been a perfect place to open up. Black owned businesses in the neighborhood, we need more of that. Community, uh, say, and what stores are in our neighborhood and those smoke shops, you shouldn't have that. That's a no-no, it's right next to the bus stop, you know, it's very dangerous. And so we need, right, that's right, we need to, 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 to. Yeah, so I'm just, uh, reiterating that, how important it is to come together outside of just our community, uh, uh, resident association and, uh, come to the table, all of us, and support one another for each other's community and neighborhood, for what our needs are and what we don't want there. So that's something that we should talk about later as well.
I think that, um, you know, everybody has, has good ideas, everybody can, but your TA by itself is not very, you know, you have to, we have to have a many starting, we have to have a gym, we, we, we know where we're going. So this, we go, we're meeting a lot of TA, but, the, the class, any more? For the meeting, when do they have them?
Well, that is, um, for all of the developments in, uh, this part of Queens, this is, this is western Eastern Queens. This is Eastern Queens, so we're talking about people from the neighborhood, you know, in those developments as well, from this, what's talking about here today is the ones in part of, the five developments, that's what we're saying, but when you get together, it's four minutes. They're five developments. So that's, yes, okay, so.
Absolutely.
We're taking notes, not attacking the program, and then we'll, uh, get together with the other, uh, residents as soon as possible, especially with regards to just this smoke shop.
Or anything else that comes into, you know, all, all movements that I have, uh, that started with one, but, you know, with movement, you think, you want to, you're trying to go, you know, working together, I think, for a lot of work, and you don't. As I was saying, you, you know, we, we go over to stay in the business, we, but every three years and you really know, you know, making partner. And when it comes to, like, that smoke shop, we have to understand, we live on a free enterprise too. If that guy can get, can buy that store, rent that store, you're not asking.
Right, you know, for that, so, I would think that consideration, right? You know, and I'm, I'm seeing, you know, wasn't there some common sense, it's common, we're not, you know, we, 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 you know, the thing was that, when you're walking in the proximity, you know, it was so the law. And that process, if you're looking to, 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 some, okay, that's fine, we're ready for that, where they, you know, you think, okay, what is everybody know? They're not asking, they're not asking people as to me, they just say, okay, we don't have a constitution, we, we, we are, we, we, this is for, for, this is living, so we can just, we're saying this, we're the people, while we're moving, so that they don't have to get together and process and speak those up. I'm, I'm giving you the second, companies know, there's a number of, uh, uh, these one things, right? Uh, you know, teams that stop, stop, and, 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 and when people got together, protest that store, protect the women, let them turn around and say, we need you to protect them, because they are all dying and giving this, you know, all, uh, all people, and he's, you know, like, like, how can you do that? You're too vulnerable, you're too, you're, so you're speaking out, you're still, you are, you're, you're, say, everything I'm gonna do is funny to you, you, and, 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 what happened, and you, you know, that is the, you know, it's, and you don't feel that any single approach, but I'm like, come on, come on, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to, but then we have this, um, you know, it's, you know, the , you know, take, you know, everyone cares, and, 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 and so these folks change your behavior. We're gonna shut them down, and then you're, oh, why do you want to shut them down when that's like a party? So that all of them, all of them, students will be down in general, that's, you know, so that we won't have to worry about, what is someone that's looking for them for you? And you.
That leads to asking you guys question. What kind of, of programs are out there that, uh, how do you call it, that investigate issues like what we're talking about? Um, to me, neighborhood advisory board, um, D Y C D, I know that you can see the, the children and centers and whatnot, but you're talking about community as well. So do you deal with, like, following up, what do you call it, independent orders or somebody to investigate its issues that happen in, uh, in the stores and, uh, in the community shops and stores in terms of the quality of food, in terms of how we achieve our community? So are there programs in place for that, where you got people to tour that local community? The local community board? So you're talking about that?
No.
The community board, you know, where it works.
People, yeah, so they will be the ones sat on the hat issues, the tour, uh, this is a, it's, you know, it's, and, 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 and so, it's just, you know, having a family, being those are a lot, a lot of necessary that is, uh, you, 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 it's probably very, it's, it's, it's also, uh, economic, and, 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 you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, it's, 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 how, when you're visiting, you know, you know, that, that's, 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 that's
Is a simple. It's not a deep problem, it's a simple or a very problem. So that's how I think we need to approach. You know, uh, and then I like the idea of the five. But yeah, yeah, I I like that idea. I've been, I've been going to specify the minute going forward from tonight.
When you walk in. I mean, you know. When I walk up my hallway, you walk up down the block, you're not even. So if I'm going back. And now he shows up back in there.
You got it, Dr. Green?
I've been having already. You know. Along with some videos, well, we tried to get this one along with fifteen churches on the phone. You know, but whatever, that's, that's going to be really good. You walk around as close as you can. And you'll see what's happening, right? But I can tell. Up and down the street or down the avenue, I mean. We want to see the rest. All right. You know, because there's a demand, you need to go. He's going to walk from my home. It's a, I don't know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a small room, but you don't get that long. I was driving, but I normally, this is the, but the thing is that. When you see something that's detrimental. And he didn't accept it. That's part of it, you know, the particularity is he thought, you know. It's like, okay, we're not the first problem that we fix something, we do. Turn something, we might have been, been used to it. I mean, that's my setup structure.
Those faith and see difference thing. The minute this community become more violent. When the construction is over, those kind of questions, they will be snapped up like that. Just like that. We can't prevent that, but we want control of, of what's going in those things. And I, if somebody else has got a better idea about me, but like you, I don't, the best idea I've heard so, so far is this five. PA, uh, idea.
Speaking, you know, that Senator Sanders has some leadership meeting on Saturday, Saturday, or any of Saturdays, you know. About this. Okay, so yes, and, um. Tonight, this having meeting at seven o'clock is regards regarding the school, um. Low goodness, too low goodness. But tomorrow, I mean, Saturday, it's at ten o'clock in the morning. He has, I mean, where leaders and the community come on and, um, fans who, you know, start to speak about their concerns. And that's what we need to get out, that's what we need to get, that's what we need to get on. And I'm just so inundated with a lot of meetings that I'm already tagged into.
So, um, you guys, I gotta listen to that. We will be ready for you. We need to, we need to be dedicated on. On. What are the, what's going to happen in that, what's going to happen, do you get anything to do with the Y C P? What is it that's happened? So we can be totally involved, we can just totally allow. To, um, what in the, uh, what we, we, the, 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 what we can do with you. As well, all that. You got the problem then, bring, what is the problem when you want to, for, you need to educate them, that's. We have a state office in here, and most of this, the public administration, why, they can be. What is the state's role? What does the state have authority to control? You have a, a county person for the, and what is the role? What does it have authority? The city council person for being a books scout. What is the role of the city council person? What can they help you, or can they not help you? I'm going to give you a couple of examples. If you want to help your, this is why I want to split my private, what is that? B and B, who or who has authority on you? New York State Department of Water, right? So by how was my private, would I go to my town? You know, when you were dating me, no. I've been getting, yes, but I'm saying, if I've already, I'm at B and B, I'm getting an impact. I'm not getting through, I'm not involved. So now my letter of speech that I want to speak to would not be my city council, or would not be my congressman. It would be my state representative, the, the state representative, and like, term, if I have a problem with the security test. My D A, my two fathers were. Um, so who has authority on my security test?
Federal government.
The federal government. So which letter of speech would that be?
That would be me.
That would be how?
But let me tell you, if you go to, uh, your federal representative, or any of your state representatives, or your city representatives. If you're at the wrong place, they're telling you you're at the wrong place, they're telling you very loud.
What I'm saying, well, is. Why am I going to go around the world when I, when I could be educated?
By who?
Direct, or.
By who?
Civic means I just gave it to myself, I'm learning, I'm asking questions, my editing. This is a different world when you use the public, you know, federal agency, I. You have to sit, go to the library, go look for books, the book, now your education is in my hands, so. I got a little, you say, like, hmm, what do I ask about my drivers, I think, and. I have also, maybe going back to the thinking of our minds, the class of people. We've been so programmed with every test, generation, we're, and very comfortable being. Yeah, I'm not tired, I'm getting the most. For the, for the, for the, yeah, see, do.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Thank you very much. You, you got a role.
Yes, thank you, hi. So, on me, when we know, let's say, um, not, you better know. I gave him a bus, I turned it on, I stayed down, it's the, the Martin Avenue, it's a given book office. And I said, I don't like the video, you know, I just found my life, and they were like, oh, that's my mother. And now she hears the book, she's going to tell you order, she's going to be able, and then she'll be, oh, Mrs. Ferguson. I can't really, you hope you look dirty, that you need to contact Senator Sanders, or, or something, or. And now I'm not, where did that offer that? Now I'm going to be coming again, more empathetic, more disoriented, more frustrated, and I gotta go somewhere else. But who's on her? Her face, huh? And then you give up, and, thank you, ma'am, they are deciding, it seems like that's how it's. Yes, ma'am. But, but again, we get ourselves angry, and then, like, you know, you tell people, and they tell people, and they tell people, and they. And so on, and so on, then we can get into some more mess.
Yes, we know the response to that, we, we're kind of narrow, because of my own experience. And my experience has been, you know, if I act at the wrong level of government, they have always created revenue.
And you might, you might be that guy, that you go, go, okay, you go.
No, I'm not, I don't do that.
Some people.
I have a lot more experience with, yeah, and this problem, actually, just like you said, it's all very clear. They love, I ask them, here, they directly, they're very personal. I, I live here, it's probably weeks for me. You know, you can tell all sorts of things, I don't think that we neutralize, uh, that it's official, efficient, you know, right? And it's not going to happen. They're not going to do anything, I'm just going to force them. And I think, I like, I think, I'm, we're here for a lot of things of ideas. But this idea about the five P A, that has been the best idea that I've heard so far.
Okay, and with regards to, uh, residents, our community, getting more information. On how the government is run, and how our, our, our community is run. And where we can go for recourse and whatnot, we should have civic engagement, uh, classes in the area, etc. And that's something that I reported here on this list of our major development areas needs. And I'd like to know from you two ladies, if you have any concerns with basic needs. Such as food and nutrition assistance, healthcare, dental, medical, mental health. Finance, immigration, and citizen support. I'm asking you ladies, with regards to what your, your needs are, and why you're here today. Uh, we have education, we have employment, career advancement. We have out of school time, in terms of elementary, after school, then we collect the high school, children program. We have a family support, childcare, domestic violence, family counseling, and we have support. Uh, special population, senior services, veterans, services, L G B T. Home visiting services, and services for people with disabilities. Can you give us some feedback on what you see that the community needs, or your personal needs?
Right now, I don't need, you need another hospital, and absolutely, it could. Because, same time, you know, you have to go here, and as you see. There are a lot of apartments being, um, made, put, put a venue in the library. They go to the small hospitals, they only, they can't, many, many, many services here. It's bad enough that someone is putting it in, you have to go to a pharmacy. They got to go all the way to the neck of hospital, or you got to go all the way to the hospital. But it doesn't make no sense.
That's true.
It was a good, that's what it is. With the municipal idea, early care really can't do that. Go to early care, it's, it's, they can't take care, they're going to send two hundred people anyway, it's hard, it's hard, yeah. Okay, so, first, we just say. Or two, we just have a petition for the things that involve twenty. And the five, you go out, I want to go to, they know again, you have to go, because we're going to try it, like, it's all possible. You go to the early care. Well, they move from, uh, my rare person, and, uh, the. When it's wrong, it's many or not, or everything I said, because I wasn't talking exactly, but I don't go to, I don't go to. I go to, to early care. I want to go into emergency board, get a, to hold, get, and, you know. I'm also to early care. Going to be told, you know, to, you know, I want to, I'm going to see. Okay, so when the power is bad, and then the best thing to learn is, uh, they can, you know, the early care, we are only different early care, but. And, and actually, when I go around, it's English, it was the first thing I do, I want to go, you know, that. You know, they don't have, they don't have, but early care, you know, they're all experts, a lot of people, so we're going to, you know. Or not, you know, they are, I have to go, we do, uh, the variable, we have, wow, the case. And, but listen to this, though. They have no, uh, doctors there to take care. It, and she paid, so we waited two hours. We waited two hours for the evidence to come from our jet. Because it cost us. Okay, because a lot of hospitals, many, 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 oh, and when it comes in, she. And take the world, she has to, you know, that's, it's all, the real heart of people. Certainly, and doctors, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot. And that's all, so they could, you know, they have, I got them, that's all, right? But same time, you teach them, uh, you don't know that. And they, and they don't have to pass me, because I work, and I'm stuck. And I see what they go, and it's a problem, it's a family too, because you want that stuff, and they say, oh, no, we got to. But we get to, yes, we got, that, all right, now I'm here, I had to go home. Now I'm, I'm going to get home, we're not going to buy, and they go to the dinner, and I'm happy. Me, they back to where she, but, but I do this back, it's a teaching, I do. You definitely have to have, so have to, to be, okay. But you still just have, uh, pediatrician doctors here, not just, uh, doctors, not doctors here at all. But, but, and for one reason. You know, that is always the most responsible and the right way. So, so I have to say, if the boy is about to die, but don't hurt him, you know, you don't have a right to. And they're straight, and they're, they're sure, certainly, I don't have to do that. And then I, 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 I. The third money. There's like no way to help you, and same, you are exempt, you're sent out to the, to the facility, you are. For you to be six, and then I'm going to go, like, before, before you even get, you know. I haven't made that part anymore, you know, you, 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 you. You, you, I'll be tell, I'll be tell, I'll be tell you, they were, and I signed in. You see, I don't know, I don't know. And I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. What's on the, take me up? Obviously, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. Let's not be, yeah, let's, for, for, for. Just tell me also. Just tell me also, they're thinking not in a body, because they think, see, exactly why I have. So I was like, I'm looking, you know, you know, waiting time, when all it wants to, to have. Came home, then he came home, he came in the city yard, and just come to the city, they talk. I got to follow that much more, the purpose of all three years of the report. Again, you can say for, 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 you get that, I know, for. No, they don't think, they don't think. Maybe that's what it's. But they, 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 they don't want to say. You know, and you have, I mean, this, um, a lot of, it's an extension now, right? We have some of, some of. So that's really, what I, this will be during the day, and it's all. But they got, they're, you can, oh, you see, well, that is a problem. Oh, and this is what I'm saying, you, if you, if you go to my, my, you see, well, you got all these places. And you put up for, for. And before people don't, usually have consultations, not maybe their friend, I think, that I'm like.
And before people go, usually have consultations, my baby's a friend, I'll be that, and I'm like, so.